...that would be transitioning to the Communication Center and Law Enforcement Center. I do apologize, I'm not able to stay for the duration of the meeting, I have other family obligations tonight, but I do appreciate your listening to me tonight. I've worked for the city for over 22 years, and my initial employment was with the Police Department as Administrative Assistant, and at that time, that job description included, excuse me, being a certified dispatcher and jailer. So I have sat in that seat before, and it is not a comfortable place to sit, I will tell you that. It's something that holds with it significant responsibilities, and the experience that those dispatchers have is extremely valuable, not only to the city, but to the citizens of Franklin County, as well as the law enforcement officials and the emergency management personnel that meet our needs in a crisis situation. If the Franklin County officials aren't willing to recognize this and make an exception to their hiring standards for this unique circumstance, I would hope that the council members would be willing to show their appreciation for these years of service to these employees who have provided a significant amount of their lives and dedication as civil servants to this area. And I think that it's a dis- service to them to not recognize those years of service. These dispatchers have been asked to relinquish their current employment, their accrued sick leave, and all longevity benefits in regards to their eligibility for vacation time. And then they have to apply for employment with Franklin County with no guarantee, although it's been stated that it's certain, it's not guaranteed. So they're put into that state of wondering whether or not it's even safe for them probably to express their dissatisfaction for fear of maybe not even being considered for employment in that position. They haven't said that to me, but that's how I would feel if I were in that position. This is solely an administrative transition over which they have no say as to how it unfolds. And for the years of service that they've put into this, duties that they've carried out, I think that they deserve some support from their employer that they have right now. And if it's within their power to do same thing, I think that something should be done, and I think tableing this issue until this can be further explored. We're talking about four full-time employees here, we're not talking about an army of people that are going to have to be dealt with on this benefits that should be carried over. I think they should be. One of which is a relatively new employee, but still has tenure with the service that she's put in as part-time prior to full-time. We have others that have served numerous years, and the county in essence is asking them to erase those years of service as far as the benefit package that they're being offered. Their responsibilities have not only been for the city of Hampton, but they have been for the Franklin County Sheriff's Department. They also service the needs of Iowa State Patrol, and I realize that the state isn't kicking in on this. If anything, the state is somebody that we have problems getting money from anymore. But I think it's something that needs to be recognized and dealt with. There are jailing services as well as communications that are their responsibilities, all of which they need to be certified for and have a vast knowledge, not only of state code in regards to their duties, they also have to have a vast knowledge of the locations in which they are dispatching their personnel. Their responsibility, and I know for a fact, that they worry about who they're sending to what calls. Their vast knowledge also is that of knowing the community in which they serve, as which calls probably should be prioritized based on who they are talking to perhaps. That knowledge is invaluable. And I think probably you would be hard-pressed to find a law enforcement official that would not appreciate the experience of a well-trained dispatcher that's knowledgeable in what's going on in a circumstance from shift to shift. They are expected to keep track of domestic issues throughout the community from one shift to the next. And things like this where that puts their officers and their deputies in a greater risk for their livelihoods and continuing on with their duties. The City Council has the option to table this agreement, and I think that it's worthy of consideration for the Board of Supervisors to be approached again with recognizing the fact that these people have not only been serving the city of Hampton, they've been in essence employed by the county as well, and they should be treated as such. And I think that if there's a hiring standard that they're trying to meet, they can make an exception because this is an exceptional circumstance for this hiring. So I appreciate your time, and I hope that you will strongly consider the possibility that there are other options here that the Board of Supervisors can offer these employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Robby. Any other public comment?
We have a public hearing regarding the appeal by Milton Heidi, where notices served to him reference nuisance violations of properties located at 618 Third Avenue Southeast, 222 Ninth Place Northeast, and 121st Avenue. Chief Schaefer would like to give an update on these properties.
Due to the timing of when these got completed, I was not able to get pictures, but I was not able to get there and get them on the computer and be able to show them to you this evening. I received a call from Mr. Heidi approximately 5:15 telling me that he'd gotten the properties cleaned up. I had been down actually at two of the properties before that, and basically what had taken place is the property that is at 120, I believe it is, First Avenue Northeast, there was Darby and a chair out front, a chair up on the porch, that has been abated, that was taken care of, but that just got taken care of today. The property that is down on, the actual address is Seventh Street Southeast, and I believe that it's, I can't remember exactly the house number on that, sits on the corner Seventh Street Southeast and Third Avenue Southeast. And the photographs you have there is what it looked prior to. The garage door was broken and standing open, there was dimensional lumber on the south side of the house, a chunk of tree on the west side of the house, siding falling off the house and onto the yard, gutters miscellaneous metal on the north side of the garage. When I checked that at, it was like at about 5:15, everything had been taken care of, including the door, the garage door was shut, there was a piece, maybe plywood or whatever, standing in front of the doorway that faces to the south, and, but there was still a chunk of stump that was in the middle of the yard. I was just told as I was coming into the Police Department by Mr. Heidi that he had gotten that chunk taken care of, because I had talked to him previously about that, that he had got that chunk taken care of and that they moved it into the garage. I cannot verify that because I did not have the time to go down and look again. As far as the property on 222 Ninth Place Northeast, there was a trailer with metal and dimensional lumber that was parked outside longer than 72 hours. There was a plastic tub, plastic bucket, and paint can between the garage and the house, the old platform by the east side of the house, broken plastic bucket on the front step, large chunks of tree on the west side of the house, brush pile in the backyard and by the garage, plastic tubs that were on the deck and a brush by the west deck, and two LP tanks. When I went up there at, it was approximately 5:30, between 5:30 and 5:45, to check that because he had said that they had worked on that, what I had found is, is everything that was in the front of the house has pretty much been taken care of, is gone. There's still a window standing open on the east side of the house, and a window that's open about that far on the east side of the house, which has been open just about all winter. On the west side of the house, the large chunks of tree are still there. There are some lumber that's stacked that's towards the back of the house, back to property on the west side, that's been there, it's been stacked for, I don't know how long, but that's, that's still there. On the back of the house, there, the brush pile, I think he moved from where it was at in the middle of the yard over to, there was a concrete area, and it's right west of the garage, there's a brush pile there, and a pile of debris and brush, and I'm not quite sure what it is that's right next to that. The plastic buckets or the plastic tubs are still there on the, on the deck along with the brush pile that is just to the west of the deck. Let's see, and then there's a bicycle there. I think that pretty much takes care of the things that, that I had there. Did have a discussion with Mr. Heidi, because he was out front here when I came in, and basically told him that the one up there on North Federal, or on, excuse me, Ninth Place Northeast was not going to be good enough, and I didn't tell him, you know, basically, you know, the items that were there that was a problem. I did tell him, I says, "Down there on, on Third Avenue and Seventh Street," I says, "Everything is all right with the exception of that stump, that stump needed to be gone," and that's when he told me that he had moved it to the inside of the building. So that's the information that I can give you at this point in time.
I have a question.
Yes.
Not necessarily for you, Bob, I guess more of a point of information. If Mr. Heidi is appealing this, is he here? And with all due respect, I appreciate your input, but why are you wasting your time and our time giving an update on something that I know you're going to be taking care of? I mean, if you understand what I'm saying. To me, this is like a waste of our time. And then what is the purpose of the appeal? I don't think it should be a report on that it's cleaned up. I guess Mr. Heidi is questioning whether he should do this or not, so I guess what is the idea of this hearing then?
Well, he was issued notices to abate, and there is an appeal process. He followed the steps for an appeal process, his appeal was set for tonight, he didn't show up, and so, yeah, I mean, Bob is just giving a report.
Right.
But the council, since he didn't show up for his own appeal, I mean, the council has options to simply do nothing and proceed with taking.
Right, I'm just saying, I appreciate your input, Bob, but I, I think you shouldn't have to sit there or stand there and explain all this. You gotta say, he should clean it up and make sure that it's cleaned up, and that's good enough for me here. And I know you're doing your job, and if he can't show up, I think we should just move on.
I agree.
And by him not showing up, he's admitting, yes, he's done it, and I think he's just playing games with us.
He was, just so that everybody, he was here earlier, grabbed, grabbed a list of what was happening tonight, asked what time that I thought that they were going to have his part of it, says anywhere between 6:00 and 6:30. So that was the answer that I gave to him out front.
Anything else? Do you want to, do you want to make a motion? Do we need a motion?
No. So Bob, you don't need, you need any direction from the council, you know what you need to do?
Yes, I know what I need to do. I mean, I just want to report what, what had been taken care of and wherever we go from there.
No, thank you.
So.
Michelle Kowal. Next is, we have Franklin County Development Association Director Karen Mitchell, give an update.
Hello, Hampton. I just wanted to stop by and, as Mayor said, just give you an update on our activities. We're preparing for site selector visits on the East Coast, you know, every couple of years we go out there and talk to people who might be getting exciting projects that could happen in the Midwest, and make them aware of our assets, not only locally, but regionally. And that's getting put together, and what happened yet this month. Just returned from a bio-international trade show which happened in Chicago as part of the state economic development's team, and this happens a couple different times where they'll ask them, "We're experienced developers to go down there and essentially provide free labor for the event." But it was an exciting show, and I believe the state came away with, with some opportunities to have conversations, if nothing else. I know that the governor and the economic development director for the state were tied up in meetings an entire day, back to back to back, back to back, and so that, that's encouraging news. Regional support for econo, from the state for regional groups is drawing up, which definitely puts in jeopardy the regional approach for a lot of areas. And we are lucky in that we have a really robust marketing program, and it's the kind of program that gets even medium-sized citizens to sit up and pay attention. What are you, you're doing that? I get that all the time. You guys, it's like you're supposed to be limited by size, and we don't believe in that. So just a heads up that with the state cutting back on regional funding, who knows what's going to happen with the regional group? We don't need it, we do our own thing quite well. However, what is important, what is of value that comes out of a regional approach is the data. Regional labor shed reports, skill set reports, and things like that, that individually would be too expensive for us to do. And yet we draw from a region for labor force. So that's, that's one thing that keeps us kind of in the game. There's a rural expansion, Ham and Eggs is expanding, going to invest about $10 million in a new laying house, houses and processing facilities. They've contracted with a California company, and basically they're going to have a bunch of chickens who lay a boatload of eggs, and they're going to go put those on a train and take them out to California. That's all I know. But we're looking at 25 jobs, and that would be jobs made available certainly to Hampton residents, and probably, possibly 20 trucking jobs too. So we're waiting to see what happens with that. Industrial park, eight acres. Okay, there's been something out there, I would love to know who's doing this, saying that FCDA won't sell them the property. We have eight and a half acres out there, it's the last eight and a half acres we have. The criteria and what is required of anyone interested in purchasing any ground we own is submit a plan. Tell us what you want to do. Tell us how you're going to do it. Tell us how you're financed, and we'll see if we like that idea or not. We expect something to be built on that ground that generates property value, and jobs to be created, that's the whole point. And no one submitted a plan. They've been, anyone who's expressed an interest in the ground has been told what they're expected to do more than once, and they haven't submitted. So there you go. It is not at all true that FCDA won't sell anybody any ground. There are certain things you've got to do, and if that's what you've got to do, there's no exceptions. And because that's our last eight and a half acres, we're going to drop a building on it, and we're putting that 30,000 square foot up, pending financing. We've just completed an initial bid process using Franklin County-based general contractors and/or those who are members of FCDA. Nobody else can play. We would get calls from Waterloo and Fort Dodge, I'm sorry, no, we're keeping it local. And once we get those bids in, they get submitted along with our application to the USDA, and the USDA will tell us whether or not they think this is worth funding. I want to make clear too, that because we have so many general contractors on our membership, and because we have a general contractor on our board, we appointed an independent committee to look over these bids. They never, those bids never even came to the office. The bids, the proposals went straight to this committee for review. I'm not going to see them, our board isn't going to see them. The committee will make a recommendation to the FCDA board of the top two submittals, and then FCDA will take it from there. And so there's no, there's just no chance for there to be anything other than a fair process for everyone. And then FCDA, of course, wrote up the criteria that, to protect the organization, protect our investment, that we, well, the basis for accepting a bid, and that we can accept or reject any and all bids, because we're not compelled to accept the lowest bid, we can take into consideration a contractor's experience, reputation, ability to finance, and all these important things that can sometimes trip you up and make you, you know, make other entities have to take someone who may be substandard as a contractor. Fortunately, we're not there. So anyway, I've been spending a lot of time, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of writing, even FCDA has to write a business plan to submit to the USDA, and there's environmental studies, and this and that and the other thing, that's taking up some time. Let's see, Workforce One was again a great success, the Hampton-Dumont School District did a marvelous job that we were happy to take part in. All sorts of eighth graders went around and scattered around this community and learned about career opportunities that are available right here. And we're still trickling in a few projects here and there, and I know that the REC was meeting with Mark Dreyer's class and talking to them about electricity and, and all the things that can come in, in the way of careers for that. So I want to wrap up with a note about Catalina. Who knows? You know, it's, I, they had, they had thought that they would be hiring in Mark, and that did not happen, and I've spoken to them several times and am told that they're just so busy as they go across the country purchasing plants, positioning equipment, and building their company, that they haven't had an opportunity to really sit down and get this plant started. I am assured by original principles in the deal that they fully intend to start up operation here, but the timeline, that's just in the wind as far as I'm concerned, they'll, they'll do it when they do it. No reason to think that they're not going to, they're a reputable company, it's just that timeline and circumstances got in the way. So in case anybody's out there speculating, that's the deal. Any questions for me?
Go ahead. The mention you said about the eight and a half acres, have you, and there are requirements, there are requirements that you want for the business that goes in there. So have you had some interest that you, that maybe they haven't applied for it because they've already been told that they don't meet the requirements, is that?
No one has ever been told they don't meet the requirements. No one's ever submitted a plan for us to decide whether they meet or not.
So you haven't had any kind of requests that way?
We've said, we've had a request, "Why don't you sell us that ground?" And in response was, "Give us a plan and tell us what you plan to do with it." That's the part we haven't gotten.
Several requests, or, I'm just curious how much interest they had in that one?
Not a great deal.
You mentioned about certain criteria and how you are protecting your assets and, you know, the board and everything, but you're also doing the same thing for the city when you do that.
Of course.
Because we're partnered with you on that.
Yeah.
And we have our wellhead out there, we have a wellhead protection area, I mean, and it's in our industrial area too. So I'd like to tell you and the rest of your board, like we said before, we do appreciate what you're doing for us, because we're all in this together, the city, the county, and FCDA.
Thank you. Yeah, we don't want, that's, we don't want to just go to anybody that, it has to be a good project, and nobody's submitted what they're asked to submit, just like everybody else out there has had to do it. Okay? All right. If you ever have any questions, if you ever wonder about the facts about a particular issue, I've never said no to anybody in asking questions or providing answers, so please do so. Thank you.
Next we have, complaints submitted by staff, tonight that's in the amount of $168,505.16 to take motion to approve the claim.
And so move.
Motion by Dick, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Dick and a second by Diane to approve the claims submitted by staff in the amount of $168,505.16. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is consideration of approval and adoption of resolutions and ordinances, Resolution 2013-9, a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between Franklin County, Iowa, the City of Hampton, Iowa, and Franklin County, Iowa Emergency Management Commission for the establishment of Franklin County Emergency Communications Center. Read, refer the reading to the City Manager, Andrew Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Be it resolved by the City Council of Hampton, Iowa, whereas the City Council has reviewed the details of the intergovernmental agreement between Franklin County, Iowa, the City of Hampton, Iowa, and Franklin County Emergency Management Commission for the establishment of the Franklin County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas the City Council finds it in the best interest of the city of Hampton, to proceed with proposed transition for combining and sharing services covered by said agreement, and whereas said agreement will be in effect upon ratification by all parties represented for the duration as defined in the agreement and filed electronically with the Iowa Secretary of State. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hampton, Iowa, hereby approves the agreement as attached and directs the mayor and city manager to enter into the agreement on behalf of the City of Hampton, Iowa. I guess I would just add that I've had some handouts, there's been some inquiries by council as to City of Hampton employee benefit structure versus the county, so I have those two for the council to look at, prepare to, and as well as some employee current accrual rates and, and tenure, so I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any thoughts on what we'd like to do for a motion on this?
Mayor?
Further questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until which time we would bring it back for discussion.
A motion by Jim and a second by Steve to table. Any discussion from the council? Okay.
I think that, I think that's a good idea, because since you're supervising the supervisors, talk a little bit further as far as all the issues at hand, and see if there may not be some more accounting ground that we can work with.
One thing that I would say to that effect, or ask I guess, is it, is it still correct to assume that the council is interested in pursuing moving dispatching services? In other words, I just want to be clear that the intent is still the same as when we talked over a year ago, we had a combined meeting with the supervisors that, that we would pursue an agreement to that end. I just want to make sure we're still on that page, it's, it's the, it's essentially the transition that the council wants to work on, not the end.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm interested, but certain conditions I think have to be met prior to that.
I want to clear an act for the board, potentially for, for the employees, a kind of concern.
I think for the good of the entire county community, and it's something that needs to move forward, and with some tweaking of what the hard work that you guys have already put into it, I think it can move forward, I think it needs to. Don't think that we need to drop it, we have a good, we have a good facility there at the Law Enforcement Center, and it would be, for safety reasons, we heard from Molder and Associates when, when they did a review of whether or not we should combine law enforcement forces, police, and sheriff's office. One of the things that they said was some of the safety aspects of what we're dealing with right here in our building could be vastly improved by going to that southern facility. So I hope we continue to pursue this agreement.
I think for the city of Hampton, I think it's necessary that we do continue on. A few things need to be looked at again, but I would support it completely.
Okay. The other question I would have then is, would the council want to clarify specifically exactly what they want to see in the agreement with regards to the, to the transition and the employees? We had a lot of discussion the other night about accrual, and, and Robby mentioned that as well. Is that something you would like to spell out, that you would like supervisors to address? Is it, do you have specific, this is what you want, this is, this is the only thing you'll agree to? I'm just curious, I'm just, I just want to be clear, because I don't want to, I don't want to waste any more time, I guess.
I think speaking solely for myself, that I think that we're, I'm hearing that we're all on the same page, that we don't have any problems with the transition, but we do want to see that the rights for our employees are taken care of as much as that they don't lose anything. I think it's fair, they've been good employees, they're our friends, they're our neighbors, they're our coworkers, and we're defending them.
All right.
I think we heard from Robbie Stevens here, some of the details, facts around the service that they provided and with it, that we've already been, these employees have already been kind of intertwined with the Sheriff's Department already. Basically, they've had experience and were tied together, so I think that deserves some consideration.
If there's nothing else, then is there any other discussion points?
I just have one question, on page two under 4B. In there it says without, who without modification, the supervisors are just going to accept the budget that is given, and they're just going to literally just insert it into the county's budget, it's not even, they're not going to make any changes to it, and everybody's happy with that.
Well, it's my understanding that's how it has to take place, I mean, the Emergency Management Commission votes on the budget and supervisors, since...
I mean, the Emergency Management Commission votes on the budget and supervisors, since they're passed through for the financial aspect, they essentially, I think they can reject it, but I don't think they can change it.
Okay, all right.
And that budget's already been established, correct?
For next fiscal year.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
And I want to also want to recognize and thank Mike for showing up to listen. I know he had wanted to hear what some of the issues were that the council had, and I want to thank him for showing up to listen firsthand, so. Is there any other discussion? Okay, we'll have the vote then again. The motion is to table Resolution twenty thirteen dash oh nine. Roll call, vote. Eckhart?
Aye.
Lukens, Mike?
Aye.
Hoggback?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Prowley?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Hoggback?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Ordinance number three thirty-nine, the second reading areas along Fourth Avenue Southeast and Second Street Southeast, and ordinance amending chapter sixty-nine of the United Municipal Code two thousand and nine by adding additional section thereto providing area for limited parking. Offer for reading to take place again. If there's interest in it, I don't know, want to read that again?
Since it's pretty brief, I'll just summarize if that's okay. Fourth Avenue Southeast, north side of the avenue from Seventh Street Southeast to Fourth Street Southeast during school days between the hours of seven thirty a.m. and four p.m., that would be no parking. No parking as well, Second Street Southeast, west and east sides of the street on the six-hundred block from eight a.m. through four p.m., Monday through Friday.
Any questions? Any other motion? I make motion through the second reading of the ordinance three thirty-nine. Second. Motion by Dick and a second by Craig to approve the second reading of ordinance number three thirty-nine. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote. Harms?
Aye.
Eckhart?
Aye.
Prowley?
Aye.
Lukens, Mike?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Hoggback?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Ordinance number three forty, this is also a second reading, and ordinance establishing a hotel motel tax, chapter one twenty-seven, effective as of July first, two thousand and three, in accordance with the Hotel Motel Tax election held on November fifth, two thousand and two. I'll prefer reading this to the manager Dunn to you.
Yeah, basically, this is an ordinance that should have been done back in, after the vote, two thousand and two was not done. We are being advised that we need to have it on the books, so it's, I won't read the entire thing unless someone requests it, but basically the Hotel Motel Tax ordinance, not related to the city chamber agreement that we've been discussing.
Any questions? Any other motion?
So moved to approve.
Second.
To approve second reading?
Second reading, yes.
Motion by Jim and a second by Steve to approve the second reading of ordinance number three forty. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote. Hoggback?
Aye.
Prowley?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Eckhart?
Aye.
Lukens, Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Tonight, that includes approving previous amendments drafted from Thursday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, regular session meeting. Schedule the next regular session for Thursday, May twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, at six p.m., at City Council Chambers. Approving renewals of alcohol licensing at Franklin County Convention Center at ten oh eight Central Avenue West, coming to number one at six oh nine Central Avenue West, both of Hampton, Iowa. An approval of renewals of retail cigarette and tobacco permits for coming to number one at six oh nine Central Avenue West and Fairway Stores Incorporated, number nine oh two at three oh nine Central Avenue West, both of Hampton, Iowa.
So moved.
To approve?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Steve and a second by Diane to approve this consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have staff reports. Fire Chief Kent Wilkinson is not with us today. Police Chief Shaper.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council and City Manager. Before the city attorney left, he informed me that being told there was an appeal made by Mr. Heidi, that the council needs to make a motion either to deny the appeal or to approve the appeal. And then, what it says in the code, after the request for the hearing, the findings of the council should be conclusive, and if a nuisance is found to exist, it should be order debated within a reasonable time under the circumstances. So, I guess that's where we need to, need to go, I believe.
I'm going to make my motion.
I'm moving to deny the appeal.
Second.
Steve, was I?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
About the only question I'd have, and I understand what you were saying before, Jim, but we're dealing with several locations here. In your opinion, are some of these locations cleaned up so that they satisfy the requirements that we're expecting?
To my knowledge, what we're looking at is probably the one property at nine, or two twenty-two Ninth Place Northeast. After the council meeting tonight, I will go down and check on the one on Third Avenue and Seventh Street Southeast to make sure that that is totally debated. As I said before, it was a chunk of wood. I was told that that had been moved into the garage, but I had not had time to verify that, so.
I guess I know we had issues here with this, or what we've known before. Did he has cleaned them up? Are we correcting, or a particular property, are we correcting them now? Not approving the nuisance appeal on those properties? That's my question.
One of my frustrations with this whole issue with the three properties is there was nothing that was done until today. And in the time that he had to do them, I mean, I can't believe he got all, basically, what, done what that he did get done. But that it wasn't, nothing was done until the day. So, I guess I would just ask, you know, depending on how this goes, is that the amount of time that's left to go and clean up the property on two twenty-two Ninth Place Northeast, that it gets done within the close near future?
Okay.
I'd like to know what we can do to circumvent this from happening again. I think we're playing a shell game. And if you listen to the radio, we're not the only city that has issues with this particular property owner. And I would agree with Councilman Davies, well heartedly, we've got other things to do. You have other things to do, far more important things to do than to chase around junk. We have asked you to do that. You guys are doing a terrific job, but you're just playing chase the can, you know, with this guy. He's applied through the appeals process. We've listened to it. I think it's time to move on. I wish there was a way we could declare somebody habitual violator and just circumvent the rest of the process and cite him when you incur this. And I think that that would be something I'd like to see the city attorney look into, or whatever we can do to eliminate this from happening again.
Can direct him to do that?
Pardon me? We can direct him to do that? That's my personal opinion. I mean, I'm just, I'm only one.
Well, it doesn't hurt to have him study, though. We, um, there anything else before we have a vote? Okay, again, the motion is to deny Mr. Heidi's appeals. Motion was made by Davies, seconded by Harms. There's no further discussion. We'll have a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yes. The rest of your report.
Could I ask how much time?
Oh, yeah.
I would be able to...
What's the code say, chief?
It doesn't.
Is it reasonable?
It says, yes. What it says is the findings of the council should be conclusive, and if a nuisance is bound to exist, it should be order debated within a reasonable time under the circumstances.
I would say be consistent from what you've done in the past, which you've used as reasonable. That's my opinion. The council can weigh in on that.
I think while you're having a look at that, I think we should put a date certain on any further ordinance.
If it only took half an hour to get things cleaned up tonight, I would say in more than a couple, three days, you'd be able to whip one other property out. But that's just, again, my opinion. I think that's fair.
Okay.
I would say three days, max.
I'd agree.
I agree.
Three days it is? Did you have any else for your report, Tom?
Yes. Background on the officer to replace Joel McWilliams, we're just about done on to get to the place where we're going to offer, offer the job to this young man. One of the things that I would also like the council, just get their blessing on, is with the retirement of Captain Hilton, and he has to be, has to retire by the thirteenth of September. I guess I would like to ask that I'm able to hire another officer before his retirement. I have talked it over with City Manager Dunn, and as far as timeframe wise, he thought that the fifteenth of July would possibly work, but I would like to go and get your approval to do that because actually we would have eight officers until Captain Hilton retired. He is planning on taking two weeks of vacation, the first part of August, and also the first part of September, working like the two weeks at the end of August or whatever, and then basically being retired on the thirteenth, I believe it's the thirteenth of September. So.
So, there'd be roughly a four or five week period where we'd be paying eight officers?
Yes. I guess what I'm looking at is I'd like to be able to have him here so that we can, you know, kind of get that seventh guy on their feet before he leaves. Along with the fact that we have other people that want to take vacations in the summertime, plus the fact that we have the fair coming that week of the fifteenth, things like that, so. I don't have a problem with that.
Makes sense.
I understand. My only question would be how it would impact the budget, your budget, you know, to realize this short term, it makes perfect sense, chief, to do what you're suggesting. Is it something that would affect us greatly in your estimation?
I don't think greatly. You know, by the time we get to next, to the spring of two thousand and fourteen, you know, we'll be looking at his budget to amend, and we'll, you know, other officers over time pay out, things like that. And law enforcement academy training for a potential new officer will have more impact probably than this, but it will have some impact, have to be addressed in the amendment.
Are you agreed then? How would you find it about? It's a good idea.
Also, I don't know if you mentioned this, but it'll save you from having to go through the hiring process. You'll be some advertising expenses again and things like that, so.
Very good. Okay.
Only other thing, again, we are still continuing working on nuisances. Had a few complaints this week. We've gotten those taken care of. So, most of the letters have been served. We do have a couple that we've been having problems finding people at home and whatever, but we're continuing the efforts. Hopefully, it's, I appreciate Councilman Eckhart's, that you can see it, actually see it, because sometimes when I'm out there, I won't. So, do anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, when do I hear the roar of the Harley-Davidson?
You know, I need to make another call because I believe in the last meeting, I might have told you that we were supposed to be getting it, and that's what I was told. And then, I had a message that I need to call Jim up at Harley, and he told me, hey, he says, I told you, you know, I told you wrong, it's not here yet. And I thought, probably I'll call again this Friday and see, but it should be, it should be pretty soon, so.
Tell them it's no tires?
Yeah. And this year, it was, you know, it's kind of all right that it was late because of that reason.
And then put a plow on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Careful what you suggest, Mike. Put you on a formula.
Okay, thanks. Doug Tar is not with us tonight. Run back.
I just want to remind the council and the public that the council will meet a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty point one seven immediately following this meeting's conclusion to briefly discuss union negotiation strategies following the conclusion of this meeting. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Jim?
Nothing.
Diane?
My birthday in the park cleanup a couple weeks ago. Jim helped us also that day. Also had the honor of watching Jim and the play and rowing. That was during, and thanks to Karen Mitchell for her update and explanation to dispel rumors going around town.
Thanks, Diane. Great.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to pass on my thanks to Chief Shaper and the P D. I had a complaint about garbage the other night. A person stopped at my house and smelled garbage coming from their neighbor's property. And I know that they're taking good care of, looking into it. Same person also wanted to re, to remind everybody again about cars parked across the sidewalks and trailers dolled down in the streets. Apparently, they had some issues trying to get around trailers dolled down. I suggested she call the P D. I don't know if anybody's called it or not, but told her that I would mention it, and they pay attention to what's in the paper and what's on the radio so they know that we talk about it, so. Thank you.
Okay, so ahead, Mayor. Steve?
Well, I want to talk about tractor trailers. We're starting to see a lot more of them on the side streets again. Little affects these roads with the little or no money we have, and I hate to see that go on. I've even seen them parked on the west end of town on residential streets. So, I think we need to get on that a little bit more. That's all I have.
Some things, it's exciting to... I'd like to interject on that just one second. I've also discussed this with Doug Tar in reference to putting up a sign as the trucks come out of Seabees so they do not come south. I think that's an issue. There isn't anything there until they finally get up to First Street, and then they see the sign that says, you know, whatever, over a certain amount of pounds can't be on Main Street, so they go, come right past the P D. So, I have talked with him, and we are going to get a sign put up there so that stops that, and we'll have to address the other issues as far as the side streets.
Because I have seen others just parade right on through Main Drag and...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Exciting to see plantings going on in the county has, if anyone is going by the new rolling prairie trails, you'll see about three blocks worth of new plantings on the south side. So, they're really covering that area very well. We've got some, the tree board got some plantings down on Twelfth Avenue. There'll be plantings that are, and about ten more trees will be planted there, but the snowstorm affected that a little bit. There'll be plantings at Hyman Park, so it's exciting to see this thing moving forward very, very quickly. The only other thing I had was just a few comments about what we discussed on Monday night as far as losing the opportunity to have all of our complete trees all out of the state of Wisconsin and being disposed of. As we talked Monday night, we all agreed that we should do some separation of wood and small branches so that the wood was accessible to those that may want to get it for burning purposes. It could happen. Plus, it helps us so that if we want to, D N R representative that was here last year told us that one of the ways that we might consider disposing of some of this material is have small piles of brush that will burn hot and only when the wind is in the right direction. So, I guess Doug's not here, didn't have a chance to talk with him on this, but maybe the suggestion of Jim's here, we have three people that man that site Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, and very potentially, if the wind's in the right direction, we could give them the authority to go ahead and burn and have a fire extinguisher in the hut there, and if the wind turns around in the wrong direction, put the fire out. But I don't think we should do that without informing the people who have complained, legitimately complained about a smoke issue. I think we need to be upfront with them if we're going to do that, follow through on that plan. The other thing that was mentioned, me, one of the people who has gotten a large, tremendous amount of wood previously from the city suggested that if we're trying to go ahead and separate that, and I think our guys identify tree species very well, that in our log piles at the, at the county site, that we separate into valuable burning wood, ash oak, and some of the other, some of the other woods that are very, maple, that burn very well and desirable, have those logs in one pile, and cottonwoods and pine and poplar in another pile because they're, they're just not very valuable for burning. It would help us get rid of a problem. That's the whole point. So, that's it. The other thing that was mentioned being, one of the people who has gotten a large tremendous amount of wood previously from the city suggested that if we're trying to go ahead and separate, that, and I think our guys identify tree species very well, that in our log piles at the, at the campsite, that we separate into valuable burning wood, ash oak, and some of the other, some of the other woods that are very, maple, that burn very well and desirable, have those logs in one pile, and cottonwoods, and pine, and poplar in another pile, because they're, they're just not very valuable for burning. It would help us get rid of a problem, that's the whole point, so, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And my report tonight, one thing I wanted to clarify is throughout this whole dispatch negotiating process, you know, I started out, you know, this process, you know, sometime last year, kind of picked up the ball and started out with Supervisor Plaguey, and had a good working relationship with him, and he's, of course, dealing with health issues and things, and a good working relationship has continued with Supervisor Nolte. There's, the problems that are there seem to be dealing with concerns of one supervisor, and we try to work well, you know, together, you know, we try to address concerns, and I just wanted to clarify that it's, the negotiation processes haven't been all negative. I mean, you take the good with the bad, and there have, we have had good discussions, and if I overstated how negative that was on Monday, I mean, obviously, I think the end result, everybody's not happy with, and we'll take a look at that again, but I wanted to clarify that the process itself has not been entirely, maybe as horrible as maybe what it sounded like, so. And I want to thank again Mike for showing up tonight to listen to what you guys had to say, and hopefully, he's able to take some of that back with him, so. Also, I want to thank Karen for her update tonight, and hope that Catalina is able to get their hiring process going soon, get production rolling. And I am a part of the hiring committee that's taking a look at the applications for Emergency Management Coordinator, and we started that process last night, there were twelve applications, we're down to eleven because one of the gentlemen took a Floyd County job, so we've got eleven applications to go through, and we'll be going through those this, on our own this week, the committee will be, and then hopefully, the goal is to have somebody hired to start on July first, so that process continues. So, if there's no other questions, any other comments? Yeah, Ted?
I just noticed the new sign up there in Banshell Park, when you're at the stop sign pointing east right there on Highway three, there's a sign on the stoplight post that says park closes at ten o'clock or midnight, that is right in the middle of the sign, if that could be put on a state like the other three corners of the park are at sometime, that would sure be nice. Could read the sign much better.
Okay. Alright, thank you. First one to pause, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved for adjourn.
Second.